The Suffolk City School Board will now come to order. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance by Dr. Brooks Buck.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The public may provide comments regarding the strategic plan development. Do we have anyone in the public who would like to give comments? Yes, I saw a hand. You may come up to the podium, please.
Hi, I just wanted to know where you're going to go into any details about the strategic plans on redevelopment before I can actually comment on it. I just had a very brief understanding of it.
The actual strategic plan, oh, I'm sorry. The strategic plan will be listed on our website and it will be available for folks to make comment if they'd like, but it has a detailed plan as far as what we're planning to do for the future years here in Suffolk Public Schools. So if you want to check our website, you can take a look at the strategic plan on that. Okay? Thank you.
Now we will have our regular public, the certificate of the certification of the closed meeting. Attorney Waller?
Resolution of certification of the closed meeting of April 12, 2018 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
So move.
Board Member Bouchard?
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member DeBrasky?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next, we will have public speakers on agenda topics.
We do not have anyone signed up, Mr. Chair.
No one has signed up for that. Now we will have reports by the superintendent.
Thank you. Yes. As you can see, there's only one item listed, and that's our calendar of special events. If you'll turn to page 15, you'll see we have a number of special recognition days coming up. I would like to point out that National Public School Volunteer Week is April 16 through the 20th. You'll see we'll be recognizing our Rookie Teachers of the Year during a reception on April 17. Library Media Specialist Appreciation Day, April 18. I have my superintendent's art show at the school board office on April 24. Teacher of the Year banquet on May 1. School Lunch Hero Day, May 4. National Teacher Appreciation Week, May 7 through the 11th. Teacher Assistant Appreciation Day, May 9. And National School Nurse Day on May 9 as well. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next, we will have our consent agenda. Will board members look at the consent agenda and if anything they'd like to pull out to have discussed, you're free to do so at this time. If not, we will accept the consent agenda as granted.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as approved.
Second. Board Member Bouchard?
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member DeBrasky?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Motion carried.
May I ask a question about the, one, couple of the, I mean, an item on the consent agenda, not the pullout, I just wanted to ask a question about it. I'd like to know, this is talking about a school trip. This is insurance for students to tour Paris, Normandy, and Brittany. Okay. That just reminds me, is there any more information about our students planning more field trips for our students? I haven't heard anything about that.
Yes.
And I'm very, I'd be very interested that we would start sending these kids on
More field trips.
Not virtual, for field trips.
Right.
Real, live field trips.
Yes. We have had discussion about that, and we have a committee now looking to determine which of those field trips would be designated for particular grade levels. The thought is that we'll have a particular designated field trip for each grade level that students would be able to look forward to when they get into fourth grade, fifth grade, and so on. I'm not sure if the committee has begun to work. Dr. Harrison, is there any more input regarding that that you might share?
Good evening. And yes, we actually, just as Dr. Whitney stated, we're currently, most of that is, that work right now is being done with the instructional team. We have the science team and the social studies team are identifying content-related field trips that would be appropriate for each grade level, and they're working on proposals to submit to, for my review and for Dr. Whitney's review, and then we'll get other stakeholder input on that as well before moving forward with that list of trips.
And do you envision our being able to put that into action this next school term or not?
Yes.
Yes?
We do.
Okay.
We do.
School-wide or just phased in or?
I anticipate it being, school-wide, we'll determine which grade levels. It may not be every grade level next year, but we'll determine which field trips are tightly aligned with the SOLs and then determine which designated areas we may have those field trips scheduled for.
Okay. Thank you.
But yeah, the plan is for it to begin next year.
Okay. Thank you.
I too had a question about that, and it's right along those lines, so you've probably answered it, I hope is the case. I had the opportunity to speak to a government class, and like, would it be considered or is that something we're considering, allowing them just to go to the Journal Assembly to see how things work in Virginia, or to go to Congress in Washington, we can get passes so they can visit? I took eighth graders there when I was a principal years ago, so I was just wondering.
And that's exactly, those are the exact types of opportunities that we want to make sure our students have available to them, and it's absolutely content-related and also aligns very well with the profile of a Virginia graduate, where we're trying to prepare our students to be life-ready citizens.
Thank you. Good. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have unfinished business by Dr. Whitney.
Yes. The first item, as you can see, we place on the agenda every month when we're in the budget development process. We have obviously submitted our budget to the school board, I'm sorry, to the city council, to city manager, rather. So we include this here just for any discussion that might be necessary, but we have no formal report.
All right. Any questions by the board members on this topic?
I don't have any questions about that, but I have a question about the performance energy.
We're going to that one next.
Okay.
Energy performance contracting.
Yes. Yes. If you'll turn to page 17, you'll notice that you actually, that's where it begins with three items, page 17, 19, and 31. And at the request of a board member, we, I'd like to just summarize just where we are and what we've done up to this point with performance contracting, which you know we've looked at extensively. The city manager and I have explored performance contracting at a smaller scale, different from what you saw when we presented it as a joint board with the city council. What I've included in this packet here, and staff will share with you more information, is on page 17, we have our HVAC equipment replacement estimate priority list that you've seen before. We have 10 items that are included on there with an estimated price, or cost, rather. And on page 19, which Mr. Napier will be sharing with you in more detail, is a proposal that includes the school, a possibility of the school division borrowing approximately $8 million to move forward with the performance contracting. However, if you'll turn to page 31, 31 speaks to the proposal or the adopted, if you will, CIP plan that the city manager has put out as far as the school receiving $2.5 million for the next five years to go towards our capital improvements. On this particular document, which we'll also have further discussion, it shares with you exactly how we would spend that money for each of the years, one through five. At this time, I'm going to call to the podium Mr. Terry Napier, our Director of Planting Facilities, to discuss the proposed, the proposal that Train worked with us as far as developing, addressing some of the priorities and the priority list that you have before you. Mr. Napier.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On page 17, as Dr. Whitney said, you will find that list of 10 priority items. Just for your information, before we go into the scope of work that is outlined by Train, and let me qualify that before we even begin that. We have looked at a number of energy performance plan proposals in the past. The projects that are included on the latest revision of that, which is an approximately $8 million version of that proposal, includes, if you look on page 17, priority projects number one, two, partially number three, and number 10. And the reason we skipped from three down to 10 was because we had the $8 million constraint, and those were the four that we could fit into this proposal under that $8 million constraint. So let's be clear that these are not new projects, these are projects that have been discussed in the past. So if you turn to the next page, we will go over the scope of work of the current proposal. And as you can see, it begins with Lakeland High School. As in previous proposals, we are proposing, under this scope of work, to replace the unit ventilators, all 78 of them. Those are classroom units at Lakeland High School. There's 20 FanCoil units there that provide service to other spaces, we're proposing to replace those. We're putting in pumps, we're changing out the chiller, we're changing out the boilers, we're repiping the mechanical room, and we also included in this proposal to upgrade our DDC system. Our DDC system is that electronic system that we use to control all of the HVAC systems in all of our buildings. And much like your car, we've had this system several years, and it's time to tune that system up, as it were, and bring it back in line with the specifications that we had when it was initially installed. So that's what that does. So that is the work that is proposed under this current plan for Lakeland High School. And there's some pictures there for you to look at.
Mr. Napier.
If you turn over to page 22.
Before you go any further.
Yes.
Is the boiler system going to be one such that they can, it'll be day-to-day or is it going to be a three-day layover before they can get heater cooling in there?
Say that one more time.
Is the boiler system going to be one such that they're going to have to wait three days?
No. We are going to do exactly at Lakeland what we did last summer at Nansaman River, and we currently can switch Nansaman River from heating to cooling or vice versa in 45 minutes.
Okay.
Previously, it was two days, 48 hours. So what we're doing at Lakeland is the same process that we went through at Nansaman, so it will also be able to switch back and forth in about 45 minutes. Page 22, Nansaman River High School. We have already done the mechanical room there, we did that last summer, but like we proposed at Lakeland, we would also be replacing the 78 unit ventilators in the classrooms at Nansaman River along with the FanCoil units, and we would also be upgrading the DDC system there as well. So that's just a continuation of what we've already done at Nansaman River. If you look at page 23, Kilby Shores, under our priority list, we included replacing the entire HVAC system at Kilby Shores along with electric boiler, changing that to a gas condensing boiler, and replacing the electric hot water boiler with Renai instantaneous water heaters, which we have installed previously at some of our other buildings. This proposal did not allow us, with the dollar constraint, to replace the system at Kilby Shores, so that all we were able to cover there with the $8 million proposal is run a gas line to the school, we will replace the electric hot water boiler that is already there with a gas boiler, and we would also be able to replace the domestic hot water boiler there with the Renai system. We would not be able to go in and replace the HVAC system itself as we had proposed in our priority list. And last, for HVAC equipment, page 24, Elephants Fork Elementary, we would be doing exactly the same work there that I just mentioned at Kilby Shores. We are going to get rid of the electric boilers, we're going to bring in gas boilers, and we're going to get rid of the electric domestic hot water system and bring in Renai instantaneous system there. And that makes that, you know, a little bit more efficient, but keep in mind, at Elephants Fork, we've already replaced the HVAC units there. Any questions? That's the HVAC work that would be covered under this new proposal. Any questions about any of those four projects?
Not about those four, but I have questions about four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
Okay. They're not included.
So what happens with John F. Kennedy, Forest Glen, what, as I go down this list?
Yes.
This is to borrow $8 million.
Correct.
And then we still have one, two, three, four, five, six schools.
Actually, seven, because we're not doing the HVAC at Kilby Shores.
Yeah, we're only doing partial work at Kilby Shores.
Correct.
And partial, I guess, at Elephants Fork.
We've already done the HVAC at Elephants Fork, so that would be the entire project there.
So how does this differ with energy performance than what we've already talked about over and over?
When we talked about, way back when, when we talked about, I believe it was an $18 million project, you remember that?
Yeah.
That covered all of these systems.
Right.
We went through all those iterations of that plan at that point in time, I believe there were actually four of them. It got whittled down back then, and it's been whittled down again with this current proposal from that original $18 million to $8 million.
Okay.
This is what we could cover with that $8 million project.
Okay.
So that does leave, you know, project number, which Kilby, beginning with Kilby Shores, projects three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine, to be funded by some other means.
And the some other means would be, no, I just want to make sure I understand what it is we're talking about. We're talking about the energy performance contracting that I started with, with the mayor's committee and whatever, and this is half of that.
Correct.
Like half of that.
Basically, yes.
Basically, half of that. And this is supposed to, when is it supposed to yield some money? Because as you all may recall, one of, one of our concerns in this, in the beginning was, we were told at first when we talked about it, was that it didn't cost anything. Then we found out it does cost something, and then the city said that they wouldn't support it, and as far as I know, the last meeting we attended jointly with the city, they weren't talking about supporting it still. So help me with what we're talking about now. I'm not sure.
Well, basically, this is the modified version, if we were to move in the direction of performance contracting that we would use. You're exactly right, it does not address all of our needs that are listed on the priority sheet, nor does it address anything that might come up in the future. Contrary to that, what's on, what appears to be on the table is a $2.5 million included in the CIP over the next five years. And with that, we possibly, if we were to receive that $2.5 million over the next five years, we would be able to address the majority of these items, items one through 10.
Okay. May I make a comment about that, please? Okay. The $2.5 million per year, if we were to get that, that money is coming directly from the taxpayers of Suffolk, directly. Okay. If we borrowed $8 million, then that ostensibly would be paid for by what we saved in energy performance. I'm not sure, we have not talked to the city council, so we don't know whether borrowing $8 million would preclude getting $2.5 million for five years. We also do not know whether, if we do not borrow $8 million, whether the city is going to come through with $2.5 million. I think that we need to look at this, and the, the school board needs to get complete information so we can make an intelligent decision about this, not have a prejudiced presentation of these projects. Thank you.
I don't know about a prejudiced presentation of the project.
I'm just giving you what they gave us.
But I do know this.
I'm not prejudiced one way or the other.
When we were at the city council meeting, and I don't mean to belabor this point, we talked about that. I sat by a set of councilmen who did not agree with this. So there was, there were eight people up there, the mayor and the city council folks, and I didn't see that they had a whole lot of support for moving forward this, with this. So my question was, to start with, has something changed since the last time we went through this iteration? And I know that a council member kept talking about, if we break it down, what do we get? And we were saying, if we break it down, are the promises still the same from Train that we're going to be able to pay this money back? If we borrow the money on our own, the city was not going to borrow the money, that was what I left with, even if they broke it down.
The city's going to.
They weren't going to borrow the money. That's what they said at the last meeting, so I, the last joint meeting when we discussed this. So I'm not sure what we're talking about. Ms. Forsman, do you have any more information?
May I make a comment? When we met with the, well, group with the city manager, the mayor, and the vice mayor, we were asked to meet the superintendent and the assistant chairman and myself, of course, the vice chair wasn't able to attend. We got a feeling that the three persons representing the city were not in favor of the $8 million. Of course, they, we were assured that we could get $2.5 million for the next five years, but of course, you're not sure of anything politically.
That's right.
Because another council next year, we might be sure of it this year, but next year, you may not be sure of it if, if another council comes on board.
Why wouldn't the, why wouldn't the city be supportive of our saving money with our constituents?
May I continue, please? If we borrowed the $8 million, of course, we would be committing future school board members to the $8 million. And we left there with the understanding that we could get the $2.5 for the next five years, because I'm looking at the next year, because as I said before, you can't guarantee anything politically. So we would be able to accomplish what we had set out to do with that $2.5 if, if the council agreed to fund the next five years. So that's what we left with, the mayor, the vice mayor, and the city manager all, if, I can't speak for them, but from reading what they were saying, they were not in favor of us, of getting $8 million on the city.
We spent quite a few, quite a bit of time looking at energy performance contracts, and, you know, in February 11, 2016, we passed a resolution saying that we were in favor of energy performance contract for Suffolk Public Schools. When we went to the city council, joint meeting with the city council, and they brought the finance gentleman there, you know, they were not willing to back the $18 million that it was going to take. Since then, Train has made three different proposals to the school board at the $8 million level, and this is the latest proposal that we're seeing today. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was, the proposal came to us in May of 2015, presenting Mr. Barksdale and what energy performance was all about. It seemed like we were interested in energy performance contract, but now we, we seem like we're not interested in it. I guess I don't really understand that, and the chart on page 29 does show the, the money that's coming back to us in the guarantee for, for the $8 million that we would be borrowing.
Well, may I, may I just remind folks, Mrs. Bouchard and I were on that committee that came up with this idea to begin with. I actually chaired it, and I brought back a report to you all. The idea of the committee was for the city and the school board to work jointly together to save money for the system. As it turned out, the city was not going to do it because the city did not have the support. It wasn't a full council thing, and we didn't ever get the other half. The whole idea was for us to do a joint project to try to save money, and that's what we looked at. That was the goal of the committee. When we voted on it, that was the idea, that we would work together. Now we understand that we are not, one, going to work together, which was the goal of the whole working together to joint thing. Then, when we talked about doing it individually, the city said no. Now we're talking about splitting that. I just want to be sure what we're even talking about. And then we're borrowing on our own $8 million if we get support, but it doesn't sound like we're going to get support, because it doesn't sound like all of council is supporting. So I'm just not, I'm trying to understand what it is we're doing that's different from what we have proposed in the past, and the city has already told us they won't support.
As far as this proposal, it is not different. The scope of work is different. The proposal itself is very similar to the proposals that you have been presented in the past. And back to Mrs. Bouchard's point of something's going to pay for this and we aren't, that is still true. Under the law, this has to pay for itself. It has to be budget neutral. Am I correct, Mr. Hines?
Yes, sir.
It has to be budget neutral, and it is. And if I could just take a second here to tell you how that's going to be accomplished, there is a proposed lighting scope of work that also goes along with this HVAC work that is designed to pay for the HVAC work so that it is budget neutral. So at 11 schools, Booker T. Washington, Elephants Fork, Kilby Shores, Nansaman Parkway, Northern Shores, Forest Glen, and this is on page 25, John F. Kennedy Middle, Kings Fork Middle, Kings Fork High, Technology Center, and Pruden, all of those facilities would receive lighting upgrades where we would be basically taking them away from either T8s or T12 bulbs, which we currently use, to an LED bulb. Some of the fixtures would be changed out, some of them would be converted. The point being, we're going to a better, a more economical bulb in the LEDs, it provides better light, it's going to save us money, that's going to help pay for the HVAC equipment. That is no different than in any of the plans that we talked about before. It's the same concept. Along with that lighting, there is also that scope of work that was also included in every other version whereby, at 12 schools, we would go back in, we would let Demuth, who installed our control system, go back into those control systems, give them that tune-up I just talked about, and make sure that every one of them is operating the way it did the day that we started it up. day that we started it up. That also is going to save us money. Over time, the settings in these things change, lots of things go on within these control systems, so from time to time, you need to go back and basically, you're basically rebooting that system. That also helps save money. So between that and the lighting proposal, that's going to pay for the HVAC equipment.
Now...
This is no different than what we've talked about before.
And how much is that going to cost the taxpayer? How much is this 8 million, this, that we talked about, how much is it going to cost the taxpayer of the city?
I will let Mrs. Forsman talk about that.
Right. As we stated, the way that the energy performance contracting works is you have to have savings that are enough to pay for the cost...
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Speak up a little bit, please.
You have to have enough savings in the lighting and in the control systems to cover the cost of the equipment over the life of the project. So if you turn to page, I think it's 29, you'll see a, really tiny numbers, I'm sorry, but you can see where they give you the total cost of the project, the savings that you'll receive, the life of the project, on the, the, the largest letters on the page say net annual cash flow. And if you look at the first one, it says $1,376. So the first year, the difference between the cost of the project, what you're going to pay in the debt service, that you're going to have to go into debt for, and the savings you're going to receive is $1,376. And over the life of the project, over the entire 15 years, they're saying that we should see a savings of 1.8 million after we've paid the debt, which includes interest and, and the, and the principal, and then keeping up the, people that do the, watch the numbers every year to make sure that we're meeting the guarantee. So if everything goes according to plan under the energy performance contracting, we are obligated for 15 years, but over the course of that 15 years, we should see 1.8 million dollars in savings. That's how this whole thing works. It's not supposed to cost anybody anything, it's supposed to have a positive cash flow, because you have to build items into it. The reason we can't do all the HVAC is because you have to build things into it that will cover the cost of that.
Right.
So while you're in debt for 8 million dollars, and you're doing about 3 and 1/2 projects, you're, you're not costing the taxpayers anything for those 3 and 1/2 projects.
And, and besides that, is, I, I'm not sure, but isn't, where would the city be involved in our borrowing 8 million? Would it be to get us a better interest rate, or what kind of guarantees might we get, or cooperation or help might we get from the city if we take this action?
Well, you'd have to have cooperation from the city, because you would want to use the city's bond rating to get the best interest rate. We don't have a bond rating, we're not supposed to be borrowing money on our own, so we would need the city, and we would use the city's financial folks to get the best deal we could to borrow the money through the city. So they would have to basically guarantee, like, not cosign, but it's very similar to cosign, saying that they understand they have a moral obligation, that if we default the debt, that they have a moral obligation. It doesn't put them on the hook for the debt, but it does say, hey, we're the city, and we do have the ability to borrow, and we're, you know, saying that we will support this. So it does affect their bond rating, it does affect their ability to borrow. We were told in a meeting that it does affect their ability to borrow for at least the first three years.
And, and also, I remember in our joint meeting with the city council, that the, I want to call him the financial officer, whoever, was, he made the, he insinuated that, that it would unnecessarily increase the city's debt load. But I, I've heard from, since that time, that he's really mistaken about that, that it would, that this is quite doable with, from the city.
Well, I could tell you from the meetings that we've sat in with Dr. Whitney and the group, that Davenport, who is their, their consultant, the city's consultant, was very clear that this would be a shadow debt on their books for up to three years.
Well, that's better than having 2 point, that's better than, that money would not come from our taxpayers. That's what I'm trying to insist upon, and I think that it is, more than anything, is a win-win situation for the taxpayers of Suffolk. And that's why I'm trying to have everyone understand that this is a good plan. And I, I, I hope that we will look upon this favorably, or at least get the true information, and also to get, to find out really whether the city council is supportive of this. I don't think that, I think that we've been so suspicious of the city council for all the years that I've been on the school board, and maybe it's time that we started working together a little better and trusting each other more, instead of being suspicious. I think, I think it's become more positive in the last few years. And anyway, I think we should definitely look favorably.
It seems like the next step, if, if we're interested in pursuing energy contract, performance contract, that, that we would pass a resolution stating our interest and send it to the city to see if they're willing to give us, to guaran, to guarantee the debt.
That's a good point.
I mean, that way, we will know where the city stands. If the city comes back and says they're not going to guarantee the debt, and we're, we would have to go out and borrow without, without the city's backing, then, then we know from there we wouldn't do anything.
That's right.
But we can get 8 million dollars worth of work done in one year compared to spreading it over five years.
I have a question. When we talk about the taxpayers, who then would pay for numbers 3 and 1/2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9?
We would be requesting it under the city CIP for the city to go into debt and to cost the taxpayers.
Thank you. So we would be asking for that in addition to having this work done. While, I'm thinking while we get the lights done at John F. Kennedy, and that's great, I'm looking at all the other work that needs to be done, that we'd have to ask them for more money to do. And as I recalled the discussion, and I don't know if anybody else recalls it, but I was very clear on it. I was, my ears were very peaked, because like I said, I started, were peaked, because I started this conversation. The city had already said they weren't going to borrow any more money, because it would affect their bond rating. They were very clear on that, at least when I was sitting there. I don't know if anybody else heard what I heard, but I did indeed hear that. And we'd still have to borrow the money to get the work done, that we still need.
However, if we had the work done for these projects, maybe we would need 2 and 1/2 million dollars per year from the city. I mean, I think there are a lot of variables here that we need to explore, just as Mr. Mitnick said. Let's find out where the city council really stands on this, and let's see what, how they, how they feel about taking 2 and 1/2 million dollars a year from the, from their citizens, if we can not have it all come from our citizens. I, I think we should look into it.
If I may add, I received March 1, I'm not sure if you received a copy, from the city manager, that the CIP has indeed been approved with the 2.5 million for the next five years, realizing that that can change. So at this time, if I may, I'd like for Ms. Forsman to share if we were to move with a plan for that 2.5 million per year, the type of work that we could get done. And I say that to suggest, we've seen what could take place with the performance contracting, let's see what could take place with the 2.5 over the next five years. Ms. Forsman?
Okay, on page 31, year one, the 2 and 1/2 million, plus we have a previous balance of 654,000, so it'd be a total of 3.1 million available to us this July 1. We would complete Lakeland's project for 3 million dollars. Year two, with 2 and 1/2 million dollars, we would finish Nansman River High School ventilators, and we would pick up Elephant's Fork boiler for 550,000, and Kilby Shores boiler for 550,000, for about 2, 2.7 million. So we would subsidize it a little bit, but we would pick it up. Year three, we would finish Kilby Shores by doing the air conditioning units, and then go to Forest Glen Middle School and complete their air conditioning unit replacement. Year four, we would do John F. Kennedy Middle School for 3 million dollars. And year five, we would pick up Kings Fork Middle School, replacing the chillers, and then Nansman Parkway boiler. And we went just basically down the list and tried to put things where it would use the money best in the years we felt we could, we would have the money. So of the 10 projects, Turlington Woods would be the only one that wouldn't be complete in the five years, because if you know the CIP plan, driver is slated to get some money in year four, which would take care of their HVAC system anyway. So that's why that one is taken off the list.
If, if I understand this correctly... The request that we submitted had the 250, 2 million 500 dollars in it for, for the next 10 years, and it's been approved for five, and hopefully that money will be forthcoming, wouldn't it make sense to take care of the 8 million dollars with the projects, where we're going to net 1.8 million dollars in addition to paying off the debt through the energy performance contract, and move some of these other things up on the agenda and spend the 2.5 on them?
Well, unfortunately, you don't receive those savings in, in the course of a single year, it's over the course of 15 years. So it would take a very long time to get to even a single project. If you look at the savings along the bottom, you have 1,376 dollars the first year, 293 dollars the second year, 19,788 the third year, 39,848, and so on and so forth. So these projects that are a million plus dollars, or even 550,000 dollars, it would take you to year 10 or 11 to even get enough money to do one of those from the savings. So you would definitely need to keep in your CIP request, year to year, to the city, to do these other projects, because these, these aren't young units now. I mean, some of these are 39 years old now, and so you would really want to keep that in your CIP, because you really are going to need to replace these, and maybe have to do it on an emergency basis.
Maybe I misunderstood, but with the, with the energy performance contract, we borrow the 8 million dollars with the city's backing, and we get the work done, and I think the timeframe has it happening between now and summer of 2019. So those, those projects are taken care of.
Correct.
We start earning money, even though it will be a little bit of money, but we're paying off our debt, plus we're earning money, starting in 2019, even though it's not much money.
Right.
We start earning money above the contract to get the work done, plus the paying off the debt that we've incurred. And then, that amount of money each year grows, and that's money that goes back into our funds, and becomes operational funds that we can spend, as long as we spend it by June 30 of the year. So we're, we're gaining a little, little bit of money every year. You know, eventually, you know, you get a little, you get, the amounts get higher, but over the 15 years, we will have gained 1.8 million dollars in addition to the energy performance work that's being done. And if the city has put the 2.5 million in the capital improvement plan for the next five years, it's a win-win for us. I mean, that's money that's already, pretty much they're saying will be coming from the taxpayers, plus the school system is taking action on its own to speed up getting these things taken care of.
I, I have not received a commitment from...
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
The city manager, that the 2.5 would continue to be in the CIP if we go towards the performance contract.
That's what I was asking.
I've not gotten that commitment.
I think that that means you have to give up the 2.5 million to get the 8 million to have their support.
Not necessarily. We don't know that.
Well, then we wouldn't be saving any taxpayer money if we're still getting the 2.5 million at the same time we get the 8 million.
Well, what I'm saying is, we don't know where the city stands. We need to know that. We need to ask that. We need to find out where they stand, we need to find out what they would do. Dr. Dubrinsky, you had some questions, didn't you?
I do. I'd like to know if we could have a meeting with the city as soon as possible, with the city council, as we did last year.
I can schedule that.
Okay, could you meet with the city manager?
Talking a joint meeting, school board?
Yeah, joint meetings, yes. That'd be the first thing. And the second thing is, I wasn't aware that the two were, the two monies were not cohesive, I guess is the best word to use, but the 8 million that we can, we can borrow is something that can be approved and can be done without any, any strings from the city, is that not correct?
No.
No, it's my understanding that we would need the, for lack of a better term, the backing of the city in order to borrow.
You're going to have to get the backing.
We can't borrow.
We are not in, the school board can't borrow money. We're not a taxing body. The city council is the only taxing body. Therefore, we're going to have to have their...
Approval.
Approval, anything we do. And, and they said that it's going to upset their bonding, bond rating, and...
And they have already said no.
This is what we got from the two persons and the city manager when we met. Now, maybe things have changed, and maybe you have other council members who are going to go along with whoever wants to do this. But from what I got from the meeting, there were three no votes in moving toward this project. Now, of course, you have other members on the council, and you can move from there, but I'm not so sure all the school board members are in favor of...
No.
...of doing what one or two members here asked to be done.
We're asking, I'm asking that we find out where they stand, and get more information about what, what are the possibilities. Right now, we're only speculating that if we do one, we can't do the other, or that they're not interested in one thing and they are interested in the other. I think that Dr. Dubrinsky has an excellent suggestion, that let's find out. Let's meet with them, and let's see where we stand, and then we can make, all of us can make an informed decision, rather than just saying, right now, we're for it or we're against it. We don't have enough information to be for it or against it right now.
I think that we beat this horse, we rode it till it died, and then we're remounting it, because we have certain people who are insisting that this conversation go on. The city council told us no. I understand no, I don't know about no, but I was in the meeting when the city council told us no. We were all sitting there when they said no. So I'm trying to figure out why no doesn't mean no.
Because for one thing, we had two more...
No doesn't mean no, because no was to 18 million dollars.
No was to 16 million dollars.
And the finance gentleman said that they could afford to back us for 8 million dollars.
No, I didn't hear him say that.
And also, we have new proposals from Train. These are, just as you said, I think Mr. Napier said, that since that time, there've been two different proposals from Train. I may be wrong about that, but once again, we don't have enough information.
May I ask a question to this board?
Yeah.
I think, first and foremost, we need to find out from this board where we stand in this endeavor. It, it's been speculated that all of us are in favor of Train, and I'm, I'm reading that all of us are not in favor of that movement. So we need to find out where we stand first, before going to the city.
Do we need to make a motion?
Before you make the motion, I just heard Dave, Mr. Mitnick say, that Train said, well, the city says they could back us, our fin, city financial director, for 8 million? When, when did he?
When did he say that?
When did he make that statement?
The statement that I received came from a council member.
The, the...
Oh, well, he didn't say it the night we were...
When we met.
He was speaking with us.
But that, that was a year and a half ago. We're talking about where we're at now.
Okay.
And we're talking about an 8 million dollar proposal compared to 16 million dollars. And I thought I remembered the folks from Davenport saying that the city could afford to back us to 8 million if they so chose at that point in time. But we don't know what the city's going to do. And, you know, may, maybe we need to take a straw vote, like Mr. Copeland is suggesting, to see if... see if we're going to move forward. If we're not, if, you know, if we cannot get four votes out of seven, then, then the issue should be dead.
Absolutely.
Well, may I say something? I look at this proposal that the city has, year one through five, and I was not able to attend that meeting. I had to be at a doctor's appointment. But Mr. Copeland and our superintendent went to that meeting. But that tells me very quickly, when I see this, that the city manager.
Excuse me. This is our, this is our, we put this together.
Okay.
Based on getting, receiving 2.5.
But I mean, he did say that he was proposing for five years, correct?
Yes, 2.5.
Right. That we would get 2.5 million. So that tells me kind of how the city is gonna go on this thing. When we met before and asked for 16, 18 million dollars or whatever, they told us no. Isn't that correct?
Yes, they did.
And I'm thinking that they have gone back now, and they've said, we are willing to put forth this amount of money every year. That is their proposal, you know? But we don't know what will happen from year to year. But that is where, I read them as saying, this is what we're gonna agree to. That's the way I see it. If we go back and ask, you know, can we borrow 8 million dollars? I don't know if they're gonna say yes or no, you know? That's very, you know, I think this is what they want to move forward with.
That's what they're proposing. That's the way I read it.
I have a question. Is the, is the money gonna be borrowed right up front? Is that the idea, that they, we borrow the money up front for them so that we can pay off?
As far as the 8 million, yes.
Okay, it's not gonna be paid back incrementally? I mean, it's not gonna be paid incrementally, it's gonna be paid off all at once, is that right?
We would borrow it all at once, Mrs. Forstman.
Yes, we would borrow the entire amount, because the contract calls for all the work to be done within the first year, first 12 months. So we would have to have the money.
The contract calls for what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, what'd you say? I didn't hear you.
The contract calls for all the work to be completed within 12 months.
Oh.
So we would have to borrow the entire amount of money right up front in order to be able to pay the contractors. Now, we would pull the money down from the bank as we needed it to pay them, but we're, we would be paying payments on 8 million dollars from the first year four.
Okay, I see.
But the work would be done the first year as well.
And how many years did you say we would be obligated to stay to that contract?
15.
15 years.
And in the first year, while we're paying the money on the loan, we get, what'd you say, $1,300?
They have estimated $1,376.
Profit. That, that's not just how much money comes in, that's, that's in addition to the payments on the loan.
Right, but you have to have the savings first before they can use the savings to pay the loan, am I?
No, that's the difference between the amount of money we pay on the loan and the, and the cost of the payment. So we would have that difference as money coming into the school division to be able to be used by June 30th.
So we need, as I stated before, before we ask the city for anything, we need to make sure we have our own house in order. And, and reading through and looking at what I'm hearing, we do have a split situation here. So I would say we need to take a vote on whether we want to move forward, whether we're gonna accept the 2.5, or whether we would like to ask the city if we could borrow 8 million dollars.
May I ask you one question, though, Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
I would say that we're not asking them for one or the other. We're, we're asking them where they would stand on, I mean, this was one proposal from the city manager, 2.5 million. But that doesn't mean that that can't be adjusted if we were interested in looking into this energy performance contract. It, I mean, you're saying that, we're saying that we're either going to say, are we interested in this 2.5 million for five years, or are we interested in borrowing 8 million? I, I'm not, I just don't think we should tie ourselves down without finding out, you know, you're saying you know what the city council thinks, but I don't think that we do know what, where they stand right now on this. And if they were totally aware that, that, that we are struggling with these two choices, maybe it's not one or the other, maybe it's a combination of them. That's all I'm saying. I, I don't think we should.
No, I didn't say that we knew where the city council stood. I said that the three persons at this meeting, the city manager, the vice mayor, and the mayor, we pretty well knew where they stood. And it didn't appear to me, I don't know, I, I was reading from comments they made, it didn't appear to me that they were in favor.
How long ago was that, Mr. Copeland? I'm just curious.
Oh, we met, when did we meet? Last week, last month?
Yeah, last month, I believe.
Last month.
But may I say something? We are asking right now to meet our proposed budget for $4 million. Is that correct?
Yes.
I don't, it's like asking your parents to write you a check for $1,000 and saying, but no, I want some more shoes, so let me buy, let me ask you to get some more money. I mean, I, I think, I think at this point, and I, and I really don't like this. Every year, it seems like there's some drama that goes along with the budget approval. We're asking the city for money, we're opening two new schools, and we, we know we have to have money there, and we're asking for money for teacher raises. And I just think that this is too much for this, this time, this, this just is too much. That's the way I feel about it. But I think the best way to decide, I'm agreeing with you, Mr. Copeland, I think it's time for us to vote on whether we're gonna go with this or not. Because if we're not, we need to leave it alone and let that horse go and go on trying to support what we're really requesting, what we really need.
We open.
I'd like to make a motion that the school board pursue the energy performance contract with the city to get the city's backing for it, so that we could proceed.
Board Member Bouchard?
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
No.
Board Member Dubrinsky?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
No.
Board Vice Chairman Byram?
No.
Chairman Copeland?
No.
Motion is denied.
Any further discussion on the superintendent?
The next item that we have under unfinished business is a revision of approved elementary zone. While I know that you did approve a zoning plan, and we're certainly not trying to make any major changes to that, I am gonna call to the podium Mr. Terry Napier again to share with you a revision that we would like to have approved based on more information that we received. Mr. Napier.
Good evening again. You did vote and approved the rezoning last month.
Excuse me, and this is on page, it begins on page 34.
Yes. Since that time, it has come to our attention through a developer that has a proposed project basically in the backyard of Creekside, that we had a section, and John's got his cursor on it now, it's that blue section, just, the, the yellow section is Creekside, the pink section to the left is Florence Bowser. Just above that, you see that blue section that runs along Bridge Road, right there. It was our intention that that blue section not be zoned for Northern Shores. I will take responsibility for this one. That got by us. When the developer came to see me about his development, which is going right in that section, go down just a little, John, right, right there, that his clients would be attending Northern Shores, we took another look. What happened? That section of land running from the Chesapeake line all the way to the river, there are no students that live in there. It got overlooked. Everything north of Bridge Road was supposed to go to Northern Shores. Everything south of Bridge Road, under this plan, would either have gone to Creekside or Florence Bowser. We missed that section. We would like to correct it now. So what we're asking you to do is take that blue section that John is showing you, and on this slide, you can see where we have pushed the Creekside zone up to Bridge Road. When you cross over the river there, we have pushed the drive, the Florence Bowser zone up to Bridge Road on that side. And then over where you see the 664 interchange, right there, we have straightened that line out, because we don't believe that any students will ever live in that circle right there, given it's all road. So we're basically asking you tonight to vote to clean those two zones up. We have a situation at Northern Shores where we are over our capacity already. We know that there's going to be a development coming in the Creekside zone after the rezoning. We believe we have enough room there to take care of those students that will come out of that zone. It makes no sense for us to have anybody south of Bridge Road attending Northern Shores.
They, they do not currently attend Northern Shores, they currently?
Currently, there are no students in that area, they go anywhere.
I see what you're saying, so it's a new one, so it's.
Yeah. So right now, it affects nobody.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to do it.
Yeah. So if we do it now, in the future, it's going to affect somebody, but right now, it does not. So this is the time to do it.
When the developer came to you, what was the projected number of children that we'd be talking about?
We don't have an exact number. I believe it was somewhere, the developer was estimating somewhere around 75 or so.
And it was many years out.
And that's over the course of 15 years.
15 years, yeah.
Okay.
But it just, it makes sense that, as he's attempting to sell homes, to be able to say that this is the area that your school, your student will be zoned, which is the closest school.
And the other thing he told me was, they were, they're getting ready to start very soon. He was not sure how long it would take to build out, but he was estimating, you know, as much as 12 to 15 years.
Okay, okay.
Are there any other developments coming online in that, in any of the?
We don't know of any.
This action item?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the change.
Second.
The revision.
Second.
I second.
Dr. Dubrinsky has seconded. Board Member Bouchard?
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Dubrinsky?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Byram?
Yes.
Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Adjustment.
Yes. If you'll turn to page 37, I'm gonna call to the podium Dr. Latoya Harrison to share with you more details in reference to this memo on page 37. It is in reference to the snow day that we had on March 13th, yes, snow day in March, as far as making certain that we have the appropriate number of hours for all of our students as far as makeup is concerned. As you can see, the additional missed time will be, is being suggested to be made up by changing the half-day on Thursday, June 14th to a full day for elementary students. This is the last day of school. It's the only half-day that the elementary students actually had. I guess I'm doing your presentation. Go ahead, Dr. Harrison, I'm sorry.
Oh, good evening again, and I think actually Dr. Whitney just covered all of the details, and we are just asking, wanted to just present the proposal to you this eve, this evening, to, as Dr. Whitney shared, change the half-day on June 14th to a full day for elementary students, to ensure that we are meeting the instructional hours requirement by the state for elementary students. At the high school level or secondary level, we've already met that requirement, and there's no need for additional time at that level.
This action item.
Yes.
This action item.
I move that we adjust the school calendar as so stated.
Board Member Bouchard?
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Dubrinsky?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Byram?
Yes.
Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Motion carried.
New business, approval of the 2018, 2019 school calendar.
Yes. Dr. Harrison, I'm gonna be quiet and let you do this one. All right, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, and again, good evening. I have the pleasure this evening of sharing with you, and you'll find this on page 39 in your board books, our calendar proposal for the 18, 2018-19 school year. Wanted to begin just by giving you a little bit of background on, thank you, just wanted to begin by first giving you a little bit of background information on the development of the 2018-19 calendar. We engaged stakeholders throughout the division, including parents, teachers, school administrators. We had a representative from, from our bus drivers, and also SAO, School Administrative Office representatives on the committee. And the committee, we had about 30 individuals serving on that committee, and we began our work last January on the calendar. There are certain guiding principles that we always follow in the development of, of the school calendar, and you'll see them highlighted here, and you're probably, probably very familiar with them by now. But just to recap, you know, 10 days of pre-service for our new teachers, seven days of pre-service for our returning teachers. Obviously, we, we all know about the first day. It always begins the day after Labor Day. I think that's been a tradition ever since when I was a child in Virginia, so that's a longstanding tradition in our state. And we have 180 instructional days, we have to have at least 180 instructional days or 990 instructional hours. And election days in November and May should be used as either staff development, clerical, or a combination of staff development and clerical. We also follow the principle that when Easter occurs prior to the 15th, then spring break is scheduled the week following, and when Easter occurs after the 15th, spring break is scheduled the week preceding Easter. And so in this calendar, you'll see that the spring break in the proposed 18-19 calendar is April 15th through the 19th, because Easter next school year falls on April 29th, I'm sorry, April 21st. So I also wanted to highlight for you, and you'll see in your packet, the actual, the outline of the calendar for the 2018-19 school year, but I wanted to just highlight a few dates that I wanted to point out to you. For example, the first day of school will be September 4th. November 6th, we'll have our virtual clerical day, which is election day. November 16th is parent-teacher conference day, and that's no school for students on that day. And that's also a staff development day for our non-instructional staff as well. Also, on November 21st, and this is pretty typical, we normally have early dismissal the day before Thanksgiving holiday, and so the Thanksgiving holiday is actually November 22nd through 23rd. Winter break is December 21st through January 1st, and that's eight days. And January 29th, we have a clerical day for all teachers, it's early dismissal for students on that day. February 15th, that's a parent-teacher conference day, and there will be no school for students on that day. We also have a staff development day for all staff, and there will be no school for students on that day as well. The spring break, as I mentioned, is the 15th through the 19th. Graduation ceremonies on June 8th, and the 13th will be the last day of school, with the 14th being a teacher clerical day. And I want to spend a little bit more time on this final slide. We've talked quite a bit about adding the 10 additional minutes to the school day, and that those, that 10 additional minutes would equate to approximately the equivalent of about six makeup days. Well, that actually has changed, as now the General Assembly has approved at the elementary level for recess now to be counted as instructional minutes. So we actually have had even more instructional minutes, which allowed us to do some additional things in the calendar this time around that we were not able to do in the years past. For example, you notice the two parent-teacher conference days, full days for conferences in this particular calendar. So now with the added time, the additional time, we actually are up to nine, the equivalent of nine bank days. So up to nine missed days of school will be made up by the additional instructional hours that are built into the school calendar. And if additional. And if additional days are missed due to inclement weather, then those additional days will be determined by the school board. And so we ended up with 180 days in this particular proposed calendar, but we have plenty of banked time with the, with all of the additional hours that have been added. And that concludes our presentation. I want to open it up for any questions that you might have.
If I can just add before any questions, that this has been a very tedious task, and I applaud Dr. Harrison and her committee for looking at alternative ways and to ensure that we get that banked time in, considering the last few winters, how we've needed it. So to have a calendar proposal before you with the equivalent of nine additional days in it is, is really, really a good thing considering our winters in the past. This, too, is an action item.
Dr. Whitney, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Did the Kings Dominion rule get passed down again? Did it not pass?
It was not approved, right.
Of course not.
Action.
I move that we approve the 2018-2019 school calendar.
Second.
Board member Bouchard?
Yes.
Board member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board member Debransky?
Yes.
Board member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice chairman Byram?
Yes.
Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Vice mayor Bennett, we didn't intend to ignore you, but I think you slipped in on us at a later date. And we like to recognize the fact that the vice mayor Bennett is with us this evening. So you'd like to have something to say? Okay, thank you. All right, unfinished, no, not that, new business.
Actually, public speakers.
Public speakers on non-agenda topics, we don't have any, right?
Have no persons that have signed up?
We have, no, okay. Business by board members, starting with-
I don't have any more business tonight, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mittnick?
I'd just like to remind the audience that April 27th is the Suffolk Education Foundation Gala to support the arts in Suffolk Public Schools. The doors open at 6 o'clock, and the program starts from 6:30 until 8:30. And if you're interested, I'm sure that you'll find a way to purchase tickets on the Suffolk Education Foundation website. Sponsorships are available, and you can either buy single tickets or you can buy tickets, table for, for a cost of $300. Single tickets are 35. And there's a full agenda of movie music this year. The theme is-
Night at the movies.
A night at the movies? The stars come out, a night at the movies. Sorry, I forgot that. And for the young lady who was asking about the strategic plan, I do have a copy for you. You can get it afterwards. I can't hear you.
She's asking if citizens can make speak. She didn't sign up.
Excuse me, when you went over the agenda and you said "public speakers on non-agenda topics," and someone mentioned there wasn't anyone on schedule, I was asking, did that include just citizens who didn't make a schedule and comment on a non-agenda topic?
Speaker, speaker in the microphone, please.
They can't hear you, I'm sorry.
If I want to make a statement on one of your non-agenda items, I know that someone said there wasn't any public speakers on schedule. Is that my opportunity to make a suggestion? I was wondering.
If the boards of-
Sure. Sure, it's fine.
Okay, yes, yes.
Get her name and address.
My name is Renata Pittman. And one topic that I noticed was reconstruction of Elephants Fork Elementary. There is a one-way in, one-way out. Most other schools in the area and across other schools, they have a separate entrance area for buses and parents and faculty and staff. The school has had the same zoning construction for quite some time now, over 10 years. That area now has expanded and grown. Godwin Boulevard has, now has pharmacies. They have new housing developments. We have expanded the YMCA. They have parents' and doctors' offices. They have new schools. They have daycares, and it's thriving. And they also implemented the school a meet-and-greet where the parents drop the students off and the teachers unload them out of the car, which is great. It creates a welcoming and comfortable atmosphere, but it ties up traffic. And if there is a late bus, there's no way for the bus to get in. And parents have to sit in extremely long line where the traffic is all the way out in, on Route 10. And that is also an unfair disadvantage to the residents there. And I've seen cars actually want to get out of the line due to frustration, which calls this a threat because it's now oncoming traffic and school buses coming in. So that zone area, the school buses and the traffic and the parents, everyone has one way in and one way out. And it's a very small, constricted area, and I think that needs to be taken into consideration. Thank you.
All right.
Ma'am, could you spell your last name, please?
Pittman, P-I-T-T-M-A-N.
Thank you, Ms. Pittman. All right. We will continue now. Dr. Buck, Brooke Buck?
Yeah, what I was going to say is that terrible, what? Anyway, normally what I say is, keep doing a good job because you do a great job, and we hear some really nice things about Suffolk Public Schools, and I like to hear nice things about Suffolk Public Schools. The other thing I would say is, it would be a good idea at this point in time just to thank those councilmen who have said that they support fully funding the budget. I know people say things when they run for office, but there are some who are serious and they mean it. So please make an effort to thank those councilmen who have promised, who promised while they were running for office and who intend to keep their word. Thank them for agreeing to fully fund the school budget because there are some who have said so. We're just glad at this time of the year that there is no confusion between us. We do work well with council, and we want to keep on working well with council and the mayor. Thank you.
Dr. Bennett?
I have two things. One, I'd like to reiterate to Dr. Whitney that we have a meeting with the city council because I think it's important that we meet with him to discuss not only the process of energy savings, but also to find out if there are any more developments coming online that we need to be aware of that might affect some monies that in the future we might need to save for.
So my understanding, the board is directing us to schedule a meeting. Is there a timeframe to inquire about it, or?
I'd like to see us, I'd like to see us meet with the council. I think we're better informed by meeting with the council.
We voted not to pursue energy savings, you know that, right?
He's not saying that specifically. He's saying other-
Other things.
Energy-saving projects.
Oh, you just want a meeting.
Yeah. And also, I'd like to know if they have any more developments online, coming online out of the northern end, we need to be aware of it.
And we do get that, yes.
We have that already.
The tricky thing about that is that we'll have when the developments have been approved, but that does, it doesn't give us the date when actual construction will begin. But we do get those proposed or approved developments. In fact, Mr. Napier is now going to their meetings when they have their discussions as far as developments and other companies and so forth coming to the city.
How about the safety committee? Do we have a safety committee on play, in line here?
Yes, we do have a safety committee. In fact, I think we talked about a few safety initiatives that we plan to implement currently, but also for the new year as well. But that's an ongoing committee as far as safety is concerned.
Can we hear from them the next time as well? Can we hear from them?
Safety committee, yes.
All right, Mrs. Bouchard?
I don't have anything, but is there another speaker who wanted to come up and speak? No? Okay. I didn't know whether you wanted to say something. Okay, we were wrong. I'm fine.
No, you have a problem.
I don't have anything. No, I've made enough comments tonight.
No comments this time?
Well, we like to thank all of you who have come. Again, thank you, vice mayor, for coming and having a listening ear. We appreciate the budget. And perhaps you might pass words back to your peers that we really appreciate full funding of the budget this year. And so we like to thank all of our citizens for coming and the staff, and our board members. Thank you as well. So at this time, we will have any informational items that, no, we had closed meeting. No certification on that information item. Nothing about that. Now we have action on the close.
Oh, what about the personnel?
Closed meeting.
I move that we approve the personnel report.
Second.
Board member Bouchard?
Yes.
Board member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board member Debransky?
Yes.
Board member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice chairman Byram?
Yes.
Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Pupil personnel reports?
I move that we approve the pupil personnel report.
A second.
Board member Bouchard?
Yes.
Board member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board member Debransky?
Yes.
Board member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice chairman Byram?
Yes.
Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Student Appeal 17/18-5.
On student appeal 17/18-5, we, I move that it be denied, but a modified assignment be given.
Is that the right one?
Second.
Yes.
Is that the one?
Board member Bouchard?
Yes.
Board member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board member Debransky?
Yes.
Board member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board member Skeeter?
Yes.
Board vice chairman Byram?
Yes.
Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Student Appeal 17/18-6.
Student Appeal 17/18-6, I move that it be denied.
Second.
I have a question. Can I just, this is approved? I thought we had a special recommendation with that one.
Five and six were the siblings.
Oh, I'm sorry, five and six are the siblings.
Right, so this is six that she's doing now, so I think she's going to add.
I don't know which one.
Go ahead.
Right, and that we add a modified assignment.
Add a modified assignment.
She just changed it.
Paper.
One was-
What's the first one, what's the first one? What was the first one?
Five and six were the siblings.
Right, the first one was the modified assignment.
Yeah, the first one was the modified.
This one is just a straight denial, I thought.
Yeah, that's what I said, but somebody questioned. You want me to re-color that?
Read, read.
Okay, on student appeal 17/18-6, that it be denied.
Second.
Board member Bouchard?
Yes.
Board member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board member Debransky?
Yes.
Board member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice chairman Byram?
Yes.
Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Student Appeal 17/18-7.
Student Appeal 17/18-7, we ask that this be tabled until May.
Second.
Board member Bouchard?
Yes.
Board member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board member Debransky?
Yes.
Board member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice chairman Byram?
Yes.
Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Motion carried.
This concludes our business for this evening. Have a safe trip home.